It's my pleasure to introduce tonight our invocation speaker from Mount Hope Church of Williamson, Pastor Mann.
Good evening, everyone. It's open in prayer. Heavenly Father, we come to you in the name of Jesus, the name is above every name. Lord, I thank you for these council members. Lord, I ask that you give them wisdom tonight, so when different situations are brought to their attention, Lord God, that they'll be able to deal with it fairly and honestly. Lord, I think there'll be no strife or discord tonight, Lord God, that people will just be calm and collected and, Lord, let you to lead them. And Father, I thank you that things will get resolved here today because we have gathered men and women who are proceeding in this meeting tonight. So, Lord, I thank you for the people that are coming together as a community. We just ask that you continue to bless Perry's community here, Lord God. We lift them up to you right now, in Jesus' mighty name. Amen.
Pastor, thank you for your service.
My pleasure. The time is now 7:00 PM, and I'll call toward this regular meeting of the Perry City Council. Everyone, please rouse. Would you join me in saying, "I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all"? Amen. Thank you. Everyone may be seated. As the city clerk may have noticed, Dory is filling in tonight for us as our clerk. This is her first time, so I would ask that council go easy on her.
Make a reading, Matt.
That's a matter for council.
I'm not good.
No. I'll deal with it. Dory, would you please call it over?
Craig Elliott.
Here.
Mandy Yelvery.
Here.
Adam Grass.
Here.
Christopher Hall.
Here.
Michael Queen.
Terry Wood.
Here.
And Mayor Jameson.
Here.
Everybody present, Councilman Queen. I did hear from Councilman Queen, he is okay, but work is taking its toll on him, and he's been stuck there, and he's not going to be able to join us tonight. We do have a quorum present, so we will move to our next item, which is approval of the agenda. The clerk and I have prepared the agenda, and we believe it has every item of business that needs to cover for you for council's attention tonight. I submit it to you for your approval or your amendment.
I move that the agenda be adopted as presented.
Smart.
Moved by Elliott, seconded by Wood, that the agenda be adopted as presented. Is there discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, please vote aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please vote no. Motion carries. Our next item is reading and approval of the minutes of the previous meeting. Dory, would you please read the minutes of the July 18th regular city council meeting?
I move that we suspend the rules, waive the reading, and approve the minutes of the July 18th, 2018 regular council meeting.
Seconded. Moved by Wood, seconded by Grass, to suspend the rules and waive the reading and approve the minutes of the July 18th regular council meeting. Is there discussion on those minutes? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, please vote aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please vote no. Motion carries. Next on our agenda is pre-approved reports and presentations. I don't have any for council tonight. Do council members have any pre-approved reports or presentations? Seeing none, we will move to public comment. It is at this time during our meetings, and also at the end, under any other business, that we open the floor for members of the public to address the city council on any matter they may have on their mind. There is a three-minute time limit on public comment. Each individual is afforded three minutes at this part and three minutes later in the meeting as well. Would anybody from the public like to address the council? Seeing no public comment, we will move to communications. Dory, do you have any communications for council today? I have one item. It is the announcement of our national night out here at Perry City Hall, sponsored by a number of our local businesses and by our Perry Police Department. It is next Tuesday, August 6th, from 5:00 to 8:00 PM. There will be free Hungry Howies pizzas, free 7-Eleven hot dogs and chips, free beverages, free popcorn, snow cones courtesy of the Perry Area Leo's Club. We want to give a thanks to the following merchants, who all contributed to the support of this and have for many years. Herbert King, Carl's Market, Hungry Howies, Jay and Debbie Hanks, McDonald's, Mug and Bobs, P.S. Food Mart, Subway, and Road Trip Oasis, and our 7-Eleven. There will also be free exhibits presented by Perry Area Fire and Rescue, Homeland Security, and other law enforcement agencies. Often the railroad comes to...
Yeah, once or twice.
Well, I mean that they have presentation for railroad safety.
Oh.
Trains too. Yeah, trains too sometimes. That's all we have in the way of communications, so we will move to mayor and department head reports. John, do you have a report you want to give to council tonight?
I don't have anything specific. Public Works has just been working. Summer's closing in on us to the end, it seems like already. Unless you guys have anything for me?
I think summer's going fast too.
Yes. Do you want to discuss, wait till later in the meeting to discuss 1:30? Any of my report on that?
Oh, let's see. I think we had, yeah, we've got that on the agenda, so we can get your report then.
Okay.
I'll update council at that time. Looks like Chief Fox is occupied. I don't know if he has a report or not, but I'll go ahead and report. Let's see, three, four, five, six, seven. Looks like I have enough for everybody. So, let's pass these down. This is an updated copy of the minutes of the previous meeting. One, two, three, and four, right? If we could pass those down. I spent a good deal of time contemplating what I thought I should do in regards to the funding allocated for the McQueen House, and ultimately, I decided to exercise a veto on that funding. I have several reasons for it. One, I found that contractors confused about who he reports to. As soon as I held the contract up in order to give some time to consider the veto, he went out and talked to other people about it, how the contract was held up, and I had a call to me within two hours. He should be reporting directly to our DPW superintendent, and that's who gives the instruction. This contract is confused, but that's not the only reason. The other reason that I decided to veto this is that we've got a huge investment coming up that we're spending out of our general fund to acquire a brand-new library. You have the inspection report to look at. The inspection report looks good, but there's going to be some work that we're going to have to do there, and I think we have to manage our money. And so, I believe that the city is best served by taking care of the library. I've looked at the records, and the traffic through the Queen House in the last four to six years doesn't match the traffic through our library in one week. Clearly, there's more service provided to the general public around Perry through the library, and I think that's where we need to focus our attention. So, I'm inclined to not spend the money out of the general fund, so I veto the motion, and the contract therefore stays on hold. I don't have any other things to report to council on tonight, but if you have any questions for me on anything, I'll be glad to answer them. Hearing no questions, and we don't have our treasurer with us, so she can't give a report. Did Devon give a re...
She was here.
Yeah, but I don't have a report, so I wasn't going to correct it.
You were well hidden, right behind Dennis's stall. You don't want to report?
I don't have a report. The only thing we're looking for too is that the auditors are coming on the 12.
I'm sorry, I didn't...
One auditor here, and I'll tell you, the auditors are coming on the 12. Here's your sign.
The 12. All right. All right.
Did Devon make a report to be read?
Um, no.
Okay. Chief Fox, did you have a report for council tonight?
Brief. Good evening. I just wanted to make sure that everyone knew that next Tuesday is our national night out, first Tuesday in August as always, and that'll be going from 5:00 to 8:00. We'll have several of the normal food vendors that we have, and some of the activities will be similar to what we've had. Trying to get some people's schedules that have not been conducive to get all that we have had in the past, but we'll see what we can come up with. But looking forward to having everybody up to that. The mayor informed me that there is a grant for police cars from the USDA, and so I've been looking into that and researching that to see if we can get some kind of money out of the USDA. He let me know that Durand received some money. I looked that up, they receive $11,500 for a police car. I will certainly take that. And just today, I had the opportunity to meet with the school administrators and Dr. Avan, and talk about some security stuff that we had been working on in the past, and now that we're working on a new school here, that finalize and solidifies some of those deals. But everything's good, and it was a great discussion, and it was great having to sit down with them. Other than that, do you have any questions for me?
On the national night out, are we going to have a dump tank?
No, we are not.
I think the...
I think you would great, I think you would take great pleasure in trying to dump the gas.
Yes.
Yes, I believe that.
Well, not just you, but from the other...
Yeah, Chris will get it there too.
Every guy that's made tickets in here.
I got a doctor's note, yeah.
I got an ear infection.
Easy out.
Are we going to get another report? I haven't seen one for a while on the officer's tickets and stops.
Statistics?
Yeah, there you go, that's what I wanted.
It was left a while ago that if you wanted those, you had to ask for them, and nobody's asked for them for quite some time, so...
Oh, I must admit that one.
Yeah, I guess you did.
I like, I like to look at them.
Talk to the mayor.
So, nobody?
Okay. Anything else? Other questions for the chief? All right, chief.
Thank you.
That'll conclude mayor and department head reports, and will move us to committee reports. I wonder if members of council have any committee reports to make. Terry, would you like to introduce us to our school board representative tonight?
This school board is the latest addition to our board. That's Nicole Snite. There you go. And as you can see, each name tag, I can put down two there, but it probably just needs to look at them, but she's been on for a lot of years.
Since January.
Since January. Oh, young woman.
Seems like a nearby.
Yeah.
Well, called some nice community.
Glad to have you with us. Would you like to give any report on what's been going on at the school lately?
He just wants to put you on the line.
Terry Wood never gives us any reports about what's going on at the school.
No, that's your representative's book do that.
Do council members have any reports on the town at this time?
We are working on a, we're going to get a date confirmed today, tomorrow, for a parks and property meeting, and I'd like to invite the public and pick your brains and see what we can do with our parks.
And that's it. Set it right to the camera, so they can know where it came from.
Absolutely. Get his number on the website, give him a call. Anybody else have my report? Okay, that'll close committee reports, and we'll move to presentation and approval of the bills. I believe council has had an opportunity to review the bills, and we seek your permission to paper.
I move that we approve the bill as presented and payment be authorized.
Seconded. Moved by Wood, seconded by Elliott, that we approve the bill as presented and payment be authorized. Is there discussion on the bills? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, please vote aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please vote no. Motion carries. It moves us to old business, mayor's appointments. I have no new appointments at this time, but I'd like to leave this as no action taken. It will reappear on the next agenda. Is there any objection to that? I believe that, Dory, is no action taken. That moves us to discussion of international property maintenance code. We began a discussion about this at the last meeting. Councils had an opportunity to receive copies of the International Property Maintenance Code. Are you prepared to discuss it at this time? It's quite a bit to absorb.
I'll talk on it. Yeah, let's throw away. Was that quick and to the point? We voted on this not that long ago, and it was turned down unanimously.
I would agree with that. It was, it failed to receive a motion or a vote to approve it.
I would assume that would be unanimous if nobody approved it. All right, I'll take that.
Is that a motion to table this?
Yes.
Is the motion to table it indefinitely for...
No, let's throw it away. Let's take it off the table and get rid of it.
Okay, so I have a motion from Councilman Wood to table the International Property Maintenance Code indefinitely. Does, is there a second?
Right here.
Motion by Wood, seconded by Powell, to table indefinitely the International Property Maintenance Code. Is there discussion on the motion to table indefinitely? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, please vote aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please vote no. Motion carries unanimously. This will come off your agenda. We are to new business, discussion regarding local historical district and grants. We received a presentation from a very nice young lady at last meeting. Council has had an opportunity to take a look at what she left and to see her car, and does council want to get into this? There's an ordinance that she proposed that we put in place. Do we have any discussion on this tonight? Hearing no discussion, do we want to table this, or do we want to leave it on there for the next meeting?
We took the last meeting.
Do I have council's consent to leave this no action taken? It will leave it no action taken, it'll appear at your August 15th meeting. This takes us to possible approval of real estate purchase. Council has received and had the opportunity to review the inspection report for the proposed new library in the downtown area. The inspection report is a very positive report. I think there's a lot of good information in here, and I think overall, the condition of the building has proven to be very good. I had one thing that I noted in the inspection report, and our DPW superintendent is pursuing that matter. This is on page 22 of your report, it's comment number 16. There are stains and mold-like substances present in the structure. Air quality testing is the only way to determine the extent of the mold problem. Mold should be professionally remediated, recommended air quality testing, and then forwarding the test results to a professional mold remediation company for a professional evaluation of treatment. Not saying there is a mold problem, but since it's indicated in the report, I talked with our DPW superintendent, and we wanted air quality test before we made an offer. John has also been working on obtaining prices for the other things in the building. There are some that'll need immediate repair, some things that'll be a concern in the future. John, if you have a report you'd like to give to council on this, I'll let you do that now.
I don't have all of the bids in yet, or quotes. I guess starting with the front, the yellow overhang, I got a call in, I sent all the pictures out, I haven't heard back yet. I'm repairing that, replacing it. I don't know to what extent that is at this point. It doesn't really affect, that's something that is usable today, but I think we need to look at it in the future. The electrical panel on page 31, the recommendations, or the, you know, to upgrade the service slightly, be about $1,500. I met with the roofer today, the short of it, the repairs that you can obviously see the roof keeling up in places, mostly around the air handlers. We're looking at, for a year to two-year fix, it was his understanding and belief, and we used this company on the current library, 2010, I believe. So, just to do the repairs, it's looking like $2,000 to $5,000. I haven't got the formal proposal to do the entire roof. It's his professional opinion that it has come, it's coming near the end of its service life. So, we can keep putting Band-Aids on it, however long that's going to last. There is three layers of roof on it currently. He did a sample probe and investigated it, so there's original roof still from '67 on the building, and then built up, so there's four to five inches of roofing material. Just general, for the first floor, I called up the carpeting company that did the second floor. That same carpet, today's price, that's not in there, it's just a to no, about $10,000 I've got a call in to a company to redo the front, where the glass windows are. From the pictures, you can see the separations and whatnot, and the direct, the cheap thing, you could fill it with caulk. We'll see what the quote comes in, I have no idea what a new entry door and front glass is going to be. So, there's more to come on that. The HVAC units on the roof, one of them was not working properly during the inspection. The other one was fine. A company that I trust said that if we had to replace one of them, we're looking at $10,000 to $15,000. Repairs, one to three, it depends on what exactly is wrong with it. They're approximately 10 years old, I believe, from the inspection and the dates on the The air quality, I sent out an email today, they haven't gotten back with me probably tomorrow, and I would say that's probably going to cost about $500 to do.
Do the quality test.
From looking at the cost, and then they'll determine what's there, if there's any concerns.
So, we're still in the process of evaluating the building and team members. What I would like to get from council tonight is a date next week that we could call a special meeting, so that I could get an offer authorized. Our option runs out a week from Friday, and so if we can get these numbers together and recommend purchasing the building, then I will need to call together at least a quorum with the council to look at all that information, and then we'll make a decision in authorizing the offer.
Never mind my question, you just go parallel.
Okay.
So, I would like to get tonight a timeframe in which all of you would be available. I'd like to have anybody here if at all possible to consider the information and make a decision. And I would be looking for the latter part of next week. From my viewpoint, the ideal time would be on Thursday next week. That'll give John and myself as much time as possible.
The other information will pick me up.
Can everybody be available next Thursday?
No, I cannot.
He cannot?
I cannot.
Is there a different day that would be better for you?
Tuesday or Wednesday.
Okay. Could everybody be available on Wednesday? Wednesday a problem for anybody?
This is all we got, sit home. I like to get out and about with adults.
That sounds good. Okay, we will try and have everything in order and ready to come before you guys on Wednesday. If it happens that we're unable to get the air quality test, then what I'll put before you is a proposal to make an offer conditional on a satisfactory air quality test. That'll allow us to move on that if we're still waiting on the air quality.
Say, in hypothetical, the air conditioners, they're both out, do we take bids to replace them, and then the lowest bid will get them replaced? Or do we have any friends of a library that are willing to donate some of their time? You know, if we could find that out, you know, the masons are plumbing the electricity, they're, you know, certified, it wouldn't hurt to ask.
I know a lot of forgers guys, boy, if we could get one to throw in some...
These are probably going to have to be set with a crane.
Yeah, I know, they do that. They do heavy factory.
So, I get, you know, we pay for the parts, and they volunteer their labor, something like that, and so I wouldn't, I really don't want to do anything with this right now until you can find out, and then at the meeting, what was it, the 7th?
Yeah, next Wednesday.
Next Wednesday, at the special meeting, maybe you could let us know what's up, or just shoot an email.
Well, John will have prices based on contractors that he's worked with, unless somebody comes to him, he's not going to have anything on the budget.
I have a list of all of them, and the money put over there, and I said, "I'll forget that one, we want to meet next week."
So, it, I mean, I'm talking with the Chihuahua County friends of the library, so Tom, is that anything that's ever been done that you know of?
It's been done over in Morris, when he did this carpet installation over there.
Okay.
The library does not have a friends group.
No, they do not.
They do not. Each library has their own friends group, Perry Library does not have a friends group.
Okay.
Are you out here?
Your quality work is getting pretty crushed, you know.
That means he's retired. I'm sorry, that's all I had. I just thought, you know, if we could save a couple of grand.
Well, if anybody is aware of somebody with suitable skills, that would be critical, that would be willing to volunteer, certainly through John, we'd be willing to consider it. I rely heavily on John's expertise in this area to tell me if you want help offered a suitable or not. We certainly would turn around qualified assistance that is free.
Exactly, okay.
No way. What is it, Johnny?
I have a question. Are any or all of these repairs, anything that can be retaken from the purchase price? I mean, if you buy a car that's got a dingy flat tire, no battery, you don't pay full price for it. They give you a discount for the repairs.
Well, it depends on negotiation. I do know, because I've searched the records, that Fulton's are not asking for a big profit on this building, so I have not ever had a case where you've been able to knock every single repair that you can manage off the price of the building. But it would be considered in the negotiation, we may, how much we have to spend.
They say that there was a lot of wood warm in there.
And, I mean, I would...
They said there was some, they didn't say a lot.
Interpretation's different.
But, you know, that's still an open question, exactly what they come up with. I would have to have a discussion with them based on all these final numbers, what they'd be willing to accept, so that I could come to council and give them an offer. And the alternative, council makes the offer that it thinks it's worth, and we send it to them and see if they accept it or reject it. We have the right to buy it at the asking price. We offer the asking price of $144, it's ours.
We could take and write down a list of all these things, and if he gets a dollar value in there and present that and use it as a negotiating tool.
Yep.
You know, they might throw some of them off. They're not going to throw them all out, you know that.
And unless...
I think we all bought houses, we kind of know how it goes. We kind of know how it goes.
And unless they've got an offer that they're sending, we don't lose the right to make an offer after it passes. It's just our exclusive option to say.
And we have an exclusive right now?
Through the 90th of the night. And if we offer the asking price, then they accept the offer automatically. But if we negotiate for a lower price, now the package negotiations are...
I just think it's a good thing that they're doing that, at least holding it, not accepting other offers. And so that's communicating service there.
Anything else that you need to tell us, Johnny?
I mean, that's direct replacement for the roof HVAC units. So putting a different type of heating and air conditioning in the building might be an option. I have not, you know...
And that was, you know, a piece that needs to be repaired, I guess.
This is what happens. I have to schedule with Kristin. I have to schedule with the contractors to get in there for everything. And nobody can show up at the exact same time due to life. So I'm just working with what I can in the time that I have, so.
Don't throw anything. We can get the high school band and people there then, and the football team and give them a special assignment of tearing up the old roof. It's a flat, so they'll be safe. Did that happen?
I'll let you negotiate. I'll let you negotiate that with the high school. I doubt that you can...
I'm just...
I see school board members making faces.
Well, see, there's a great big plank wall. And if we're rambling, our teachers are A-OK. You know, we can promote the school.
Not A+, just A-OK.
A-OK. Well, kind of, yeah, I guess.
Once you have put up A-, our teachers are A-, so... Why'd you give them an A- Chris?
Well, that's vandalism. We don't even want to get into bad networks, boys and girls.
Does council have anything else on this before next week?
So we need the McQueen house money in order to do this at all. Is that what you're saying?
It's a question of how much we want to spend on the general fund down. In order to do the repairs on the McQueen house, we'll have to spend it out of the general fund. There is no extra revenue in this year's budget. I have that purpose. There was a surplus in last year's budget, including the land or the money that we got for the land up on Britten Row that covers a little over half the cost of buying the new library. But the rest of that cost and repair costs will have to come out of the general fund. So the question becomes, how much of the general fund are we willing to spend? How many projects are we willing to take on all at once? Some of the repairs on the new library will be ones that can be pushed out in the future years and we can work to obtain money in those new budgets to pay for it. But I'm just concerned that a lot of the rate that we're going to drain that general fund. And I consider the library a higher priority.
But what happens to the McQueen house? The damage that has stayed in place and what's...
The McQueen house ultimately, when you look at the reports, would take tens of thousands of dollars to fix, possibly over $100,000. That's a decision the city council's going to have to consider. How much taxpayer money do you put into that? I don't know what that answer is. But I'm concerned about putting a lot in because it has not been in the hope of activity.
You've got to stop the leak. You've got no alternative. You've got to stop the leak. And every day you let it go, it's going to build. But I have a question. You did your veto on there. And it's been a while since we did that.
Yes.
Do we have the right to override that veto?
For votes of the council, can override a mayor's veto? Yes.
East, either anyway. I'd like to bring it up for a vote for a veto.
When do you want to do that, Terry? Under the charter, a veto can be overridden at the meeting it's announced or the next two regular meetings after that. Do you want to do that tonight? Or do you want to do that at the next meeting?
Well...
Because you can do it tonight under any other business if you'd like to make a motion at that time.
Let's let it ride, any other business, okay?
Okay.
Other questions? Did I get your question? Thank you. Any other discussion on the possible purchase of the new library?
So just to make sure I'm clear, we'll have a better cost analysis on repairs by next week, correct?
We'll have more information for you by the time of the special meeting, which is why I'd like to put it off until that gets you as much information as possible. The next item on the agenda is possible approval of allocate funds for real estate purchase since we're holding that off. I would ask that that be left, no action taken, until the special meeting. Do I have council's consent on that?
Yeah.
Our last item of new business is possible approval of lease and maintenance agreement for a printer or copy machine. We have the good fortune of our clerk being here. Devin, would you like to speak to the council about this? The council does have paper regarding this.
So in front of you, you have an opinion from the attorney. Anytime we have a contractor agreement, the charter states that it goes in front of the city attorney. And he had one question that he put on there, thinking that it was a misprint. A lot of times, these companies, when they set up a lease agreement, they're using the same one for everybody and it's a misprint. I received a call today in Dumont County. This is, they are the front people for this agreement. Cannon has won the state bid. So they got the best, lowest prices with the state. And this company is, this name, this county that is in there is part of the naming of that funding company that takes in all the bids. There's no bias. If you're familiar with any other process of how the state bidding goes, these companies go. So I've answered that question today. So that was his only concern. With the, I gave you my scratch paper. And in a nutshell, what I did was I was asking for what is the better route to purchase a printer or leasing it? Because he was trying to sell me that leasing it would be the better, cheaper route. Whenever we have our printer copier machine, we also continue whether we buy it or like we're going to lease it. That particular item, because it's our full strength, does everything has a maintenance agreement on it. So as you see on the bottom of my page, it shows what we pay per year. That's just the maintenance agreement. We average about 20, almost $21,000 overage. So that's what that $285 is. And then the flat maintenance rate. So we're paying $1,037 a year right now. So to buy a printer and have a maintenance agreement according to what the figures he's given me, in a five-year total, I did a five-year comparable because the lease agreement is a five-year. It would be $8,134. And to lease it, it would be $7,647 and some change. Cannon is what we have currently. I have went to them. I was getting another bid. Everything that I've seen there comparable in price. I'm requesting that we stay with Cannon. This model that we are getting is just an upgrade of the model we have. So there would be no real big educational other than new technology to it. And I would like council to consider leasing a printer. We will own it after five years for a dollar. So it's not going back. So it's the same concept as basically what we're doing by buying out. But we are actually just leasing and owning it in five years. My history is showing about five years can the copiers start showing wear and tear. And so that's where I'm at today.
When's the last time we bought a copier? Seems like, I don't know. Maybe I've been under the cost of it long. Seems like we're always buying one.
This is the big one.
This is a big one?
The big one. We have other copiers over there. This is the big one. This is tired.
I was just curious, you know.
I'm seeing if I have it in my stuff. I brought a few things. But I don't know if I bought that one. I want to say it's at its fifth or sixth year.
You know, that means I'm going over.
You're that much older. Does, what's the price difference if you have this? For the, to buy extra insurance or the maintenance on something that we purchase out as opposed to if we're leasing it, they fix everything, correct? And if needed, they'll replace it?
You still buy maintenance, you still have a maintenance agreement with it, whether you lease it or whether you buy it. The only thing is, is with the leases, that they rolled it in and gave us price. Now, if you look at the sheet I gave you, buying it out, buying it out, it's $5,482. And then I figured out, according to the new contract they want to negotiate for a maintenance agreement, the figure of the service contract, plus I did an average of our overage copies that we do with the price rate we get. Right now, we're at overage price of .09. So we've really, they've really went backwards into it. And I was explained, they have the option to do that. And if we stay in the lease program and only benefit us, we'll get the better rates only because if you keep a printer copier machine of that mass and how much we use it, it shows wear and tear, so then they're coming in more. So this kind of balances it out. So you get a five-year term. You're rolling it over. You have less cost on them if it works out.
How many copies do we use in that? We must use a lot of them.
We are allowed 12,000 copies per quarter. So there's 48. Then we do an additional, about 21,000 on top of that for years.
So they limit us.
Eighty-some thousand. There is a limit. Every maintenance company has a limit. Some are a little bit more, some are less. When I did all the bids, when we got this Cannon originally, Cannon was the best when it came to the maintenance agreement, when it came to the price of the copy of printer machine. They come out, they fix it. One of their maintenance person is. I try to not request him, but when I get the right one, they do a good job. I mean, that's the worst thing I can say is I have one gentleman that is sometimes difficult. And so I have to repeat in order that. And that's the worst thing I can say about this.
Other questions?
I mean, I don't know anybody else that will go this far into explaining everything to us. I mean, they can do a great job for the city. And I want you to know that.
Thank you. I know it's a little much, but it was the only way I could compare, be able to buy out. And then, so I had to do it a five-year comparable.
What is your, I'll say, professional opinion?
To me, the, it was hard to believe, but the lease was the better route. And I guess I would say it's probably the comparable of what the police department is doing with their cars. The lease, they're making these lease things. It's the smartest thing to do. And it works in their benefit because, you know, you have the product and you're rolling it over and, you know, you're keeping at a more level budget. I mean, yeah, it's a continued budget. But like I said, we'll be on a maintenance agreement. We're going to be paying to... The maintenance agreement not only takes care of the machine, it also includes the toner or, you know, anything that goes into that part of it. So the Keocera we liked. One of the things that I did was I discussed with a few people that use it and out of our office. Anytime you get a different model of any kind, it worked a little different, you got to learn the trade. So there was that suggestion. We would love to just, if we could stay with the Cannon, we know what it can do. And of course, this one has a few new advancements with no extra cost to it.
And the old one that's going down, if you'd like it, easy to use?
I liked it. You have more than one employee in here. I mean, that would be, I would feel comfortable if you asked them the same question. I was very impressed with the technology that it brought. The old one, because we own that one, the Keocera still works that we kept before. And there might be, I'm going to look into the avenue. If the Department of Public Works doesn't find a need for the old one or the police department doesn't find a need for it, I might see about what we can do about the Keocera and rotate the Cannon down here for your use. And then you really know if you like it or not. If you agree with us.
You come down and use it for me, show me honestly what?
Always.
Every single time you need to come.
Oh, wait. Other questions?
I don't have any.
So the floor is open for council to deliberate on this. Questions or discussion or motions, whatever council's pleasure is in regard to the proposed lease and maintenance agreement.
Everybody happy with it? I'll put it away. A move that we approve a lease and maintenance agreement as presented for a copier printer from Cannon Business Solutions billed monthly for eight, billed monthly, $145.91 for 60 months, which includes maintenance with 12,000 copies per quarter. And anything over 12,000 images will be billed at .0077 per image. And also include the authorization of the city clerk signing agreement.
Second move by Wood, seconded by Powell, to approve the lease and maintenance agreement. Is there discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of a motion, please vote aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please vote no.
Thank you.
Motion carries. Thank you. That moves us to any other business made up for council. This is our second opportunity for members of the public to address council on any matter. Would anyone from the public like to address the council at this time? Welcome in, Billy.
Thank you. My name's Fred Roback. I'm with the Perry Historical Society. And you all know why I'm here. I'm requesting that the council move forward with these badly needed repairs to the Calkin McQueen home. As you know, the exterior and the roof are in dire need of help. And the more time we wait, the more damage occurs. Every time it rains, the roof gets a little worse. In the last 45 days, we have removed 96 gallons of water with dehumidifiers from the home. Water is leaking into the catch container every time it rains, including this previous Monday evening. I would like to remind you that I first contacted the city about this problem on November 8th of last year. That's over 10 months ago. The funding and the bid were approved by unanimous vote at our last council meeting. That included the funding and the bid. And during the last week, I've spoken to every member of council here. And I appreciate the time that you took to call me. And I appreciate you listening to my concerns. And I really appreciate council's support on our project. We're simply asking you to move forward. Override the veto and move forward. If not, please tell us what direction that you'd like us to go in. One of the reasons for low traffic was lack of support from not only the city, but there was no plan to move forward. I can assure you, the Historical Society has a plan. Councilman Powell mentioned friends of the library for work on the building down there. I can also assure you that we have lots of friends that are willing to do... I can also assure you that we have lots of friends that are willing to do quite a bit of work on the McQueen house as well. We have some contractors that have been very generous and donated their time. We have some contractors that have given us some amazing support for the interior work, including donations of paint and materials. Mr. Godfrey knows who he works for, he has no doubt about that. I'd like to clear up maybe a misunderstanding. My outreach to Mr. Godfrey was simply to relay our desire to talk with him and members of council about a choice of color for the exterior. We wanted to bring the home back to a more period correct look, and I think we can do that with color. I simply made a call to Mr. Godfrey after you voted so that they wouldn't mix up 70 gallons of yellow paint when we wanted to go with a much more period appropriate color. That's all I have for you. I appreciate you very much, and I'd like to get going with this. The sooner we can dry it in, the quicker we can get busy inside and get our work done. And I thank you very much for your time.
Thank you for yours, Bill.
Anyone else from the public like to address the council at this time? Evening, Tom.
Hi, Tom, should I be for thirty while, don't care, Barry? Before you, you have a couple of choices. And hopefully, there are choices that could be either ties, round, and then one or the other. You have before you something that only happens within a generation, two generations, three generations in this community, and that's building opening up like the building downtown for the library. This has been ongoing for some time. We've been talking about this, putting together plans for this, and it's something that the community uses a lot. And if you take a look at the last election we had for renewal, we had over 83% of the people that voted for a millage renewal. You don't find that anywhere. The, as far as council was concerned, a year ago, 16 months ago, we were talking about tearing that building down for the McQueen house. It was going to cost too much, there was very little activity going on there, and we didn't have the money or the funds at that time to put it back together. Maybe we can call something together right now, but I believe the priority ought to be the new library. It'll get much more use, it's going to have a lot more opportunity for things to do within the community and much more use. So, like I said, it has a lot of opportunity for you guys. I think it needs to be a priority.
Thank you, Tom. Your comments tonight. Would anyone else from the public like to address the council on anything at this time? Seeing the more public comment, I'll ask council if we have any other items of business to come forward.
Yes, I, I got a couple of things here.
Agree with us. I don't put a clock on council. For deliberations. If you want to pass a rule for that, then we can put a clock on a rule.
No, because you only get thirty seconds. I got a couple issues, okay? The one, I don't think it has to be an either-or. I mean, if there's a bind in there, you can adapt and change, but it was voted in. And I believe we can do it. What was the amount we gave?
$15,500 for this one repair of this front windows.
Yeah, and that's got to be done, irregardless got to be done. Because it's just going to make it more later. So I would, this being one of the things up, I'd like to bring it up for a veto override and a move that we override the mayor's veto. That's my move.
I think everybody's probably clear on that. We've told the appropriate language and specifically what you want to do.
Next week, better next week.
This will do that, then we at least have all the information we can. You want to weigh a meeting?
One week is not going to kill.
I'll go to that, okay?
You withdraw your motion at this time?
I will withdraw that motion because the council would like to weigh a week.
So what I am hearing then, since this next meeting in a week is a special meeting, is that you're asking for a veto override to be an agenda item. At a special meeting, that which is not on the agenda cannot be acted on. So it would have to be on there. I will take this as a request to have veto override as an agenda item on the special meeting.
Do you want it on this special meeting, or do you want it on the next one? Does it, Tom, as a regular meeting?
It does not count towards your two meetings unless the veto override is on the agenda. If it's on the agenda, it counts. If it's not, you're procluded from acting, and therefore, it doesn't count.
So that's up to you, John.
Honestly, I would prefer a little bit more time myself.
I go to the next official meeting, regular meeting.
The next regular meeting.
And it doesn't have to be on the agenda there? It can be, it can be made right up and motion of council. Okay. So, Councilman Wood withdraws his motion for the next meeting.
That's correct.
One question I have going forward with the McQueen house now. Mr. Wood brought up a comment here a while back, you know, that dilapidated under our care. I understand that. What is the plan going forward with this? Because if we're looking at, you know, over $100,000, I mean, there's no doubt, in my mind, the city does not have those kind of resources to dump it in the next. My concern is we put the 15 something in, then it's kind of, that's it. So, I guess my larger question is what is, what kind of measures should we consider to ensure that there's going to be progress on this? Because to just dump $15,000 in something that's going to be eliminated, you know, 10 years from now, for lack of interest or whatever.
It's the city's, it was donated to the city by the family and...
Doesn't happen. Here's, here's your question. It's like any maintenance, if your house is leaking, you got to fix it. Got to tarp it or do something. I believe there's certain repairs that you have to do. You know, you might be able to move around on the others, but I don't think you can skip the rain, rain falling in.
On another point, I agree with you. My question is beyond that, Terry.
Well, beyond that, you know, I don't know, because it was so, I mean, nobody did anything. Nobody cared, nobody had an interest in it, and it just sat there. You're right, it sat there and we neglected it. I say we, it goes back to a lot of councils, okay? But it was neglected by a lot of people a long time.
So is there a long-term commitment from you as a council member to continue to put resources into the McQueen house?
Well, I think this one we have no choice. We got to stop the rain, okay? I don't think we have a lot of choice on that. From there on, if you guys want to debate other stuff, I'm open for debating or talking or seeing what you can do.
Well, the reason I ask is because if you put that into it, and then say, you know, five years from now, you're, you know, you need another 25 for something, you know, what's the limit here? Because this, I mean, that is going to cost a significant amount of money. Again, I'm not arguing with you, the ref, I understand that if you're going to keep the house and keep the thing healthily, keep the structure healthy, you have to fix that. But if you're not going to, why is it going to do that?
I don't think we've ever, we looked into it, and then I thought we decided that we couldn't get rid of it.
No, you can.
We can.
We said we could, yeah.
As Tom discussed, within the last few years, we talked about the possibility of knocking it down. We could knock it down, put a pavilion up on there, have the Culkins McQueen park, and comply with the terms that brought them into the city's hands. That's an option that's available. But really, I think the question, Terry, is how much money are you willing to put into this thing? And what are you willing to cut to get that money? Tens of thousands of dollars over the next few years? What do we have in the city that we don't need that we can get that money?
I'm not asking for tens of thousands of dollars. I'm asking to stop the rain from coming in.
And I agree with you. Stop the rain, then.
Well, I don't know, but you can't do anything with a building other than tear it down and get rid of it if you don't.
Because that's your mentality.
Stop the damage.
Well, I agree with that.
Stick your hole in the dam. Where was I seen that when I was a kid?
No, I agree. If you don't fix that, you're going to have a problem. My question is what happens after that?
I thought we debated this a while back and decided that we were going to do a little bit.
We did, but I'm just saying what happens after that?
Well, I don't know, didn't we decide that before?
I have a question. What is the $100,000 figure? What is that about?
There was an estimate to bring the house back to, and correct me if I'm wrong, Billy, was it restoring it to the original?
John has a really good handle on the expenditures that the home needs. We're not denying that the home is in disrepair. The Historical Society is moving forward with a lot of different things we'd like to see happen there. We're applying for a nonprofit that enables us to go after grant money and a lot of that stuff that just hasn't been available in the past. What we're asking for is to go with the language of the will and put it in good repair. The roof, the exterior of it, if we can get it dried back in and get it cleaned up on the outside so it's shedding water again. You know, the Historical Society would love to breathe new life into this building and make it part of the community and make it a place where people want to come. And we've got a lot of material in there. I met today with folks from the library, the district library. They came and looked at all the documents and the pictures and stuff. And they want to, they want to put all of it on microfilm and on microfiche and digitize everything. All this work that we could be doing there, and yes, I'll be the first person to agree with you. It has, it has fallen on hard times. But it's a centerpiece to this community. It's one of the oldest homes in the city of Perry. 144 years old and still standing strong. And we really need to stand by it and get it back where it was. There's lots of things it can be used for. We just got to stop the leaks and get the exterior of it back to where it should be.
We, we, right now, we're not, you know, I don't think anybody in here can predict what it's going to cost. We don't know whether, there's going to be some volunteering out there, and somebody's going to donate some labor. We don't know if there's any grants, so yeah, hundreds of thousands of dollars, I don't know, you know? We don't know what it's going to cost realistically. But I know one thing, we got to stop the water regardless. Either that or tear it down.
That's kind of my point, Terry. If council is going to spend the $15,500 on a temporary roof, then three years from now, they're going to say, well, this is too much, we can't do this.
Well, at...
That's my, I'm not saying the roof should be fixed, I'm just saying.
Well, I don't know of any vote that where we made that decision.
Well, I don't think we voted, but I thought I would.
Well, I don't know where we decided that then. But, you know, let's get a little background on this, okay? This has gone on for a long time. We've got members of the Historical Society who said as members of this council we didn't see the priority then putting money into this thing.
I can't speak for those people, but I can tell you that you were at a meeting on Monday night.
And the Historical Society has advocated for the McQueen house before. They've been before this council, well, I've been mayor, and said that we need repairs done, we need this money. And we responded to that one time, we gave that Historical Society an opportunity to prove itself. We grew $15,000 towards any repair that they wanted to do, and we gave it as matching funds. We had lots of folks in there, including some that are involved now. And the Historical Society responded by going away and doing nothing. There was zero dollars from the Historical Society. We never spent that $15,000 that was offered because they didn't come up with any money to match it. Whether or not this Historical Society reforming is going to be like the old ones and is going to fade away in a few months when they get tighter, or whether or not they're going to stick in there, I don't know the answer to that question. But before I count on that, I'd like to see them hang in there for a while and actually accomplish some stuff before we start taking taxpayer dollars and pumping it into an asset that the community has shown very little interest in. There is a small special interest group that wants this fixed up. But the traffic through that house, if you examine its books, its own maintained books, is less than the library has in one week's time. And I absolutely object to the suggestion that that's because the city, it's lacked the city's support. The community has lacked interest in all of it. And the Historical Society, up until recently, when Mr. Roback came back to town and stirred some interest, was down to one person, Nancy Parrish, who was functioning as a caretaker. She and Danny Lewis did this by themselves for a very long time. And it's, whatever the final numbers turn out to be, Terry, it's a tremendous amount of resources that you're going to put into that house any way you could. I'd like to clarify a couple of other things. It's of no consequence or interest how much money they've pulled out of it, or how much water they pulled out of the dehumidifier. Dehumidifiers do not remove water from walls and ceilings, they move it from the air. If you have humid air, I'm speaking, Billy. If you have humid air, the dehumidifier will take water out of that air. That has nothing to do with what's going on with the roof.
That's not true.
And, if you take a look, and I did take a look at what was going on in there Monday night, after the Historical Society meeting, the rain started pouring. And I had a report of the Historical Society that was leaking terribly that day. So I went to the McQueen house, and I went in, and I stayed until the rain finished and not a drop came in that night.
Then why was there that much, why was there that much water in the tub?
When?
On Monday night, there was that much water in the tub when I went home?
There was not, and it wasn't there on Tuesday morning when I checked it again. If council would like to examine the pictures I took, you can have a look at the pictures. But there was no leakage on Monday night because I checked it.
That's not true.
Well, I got the pictures, and I'll show it to you.
I've got the tub.
Well, I'm not going to have a debate with you, Billy, it's not your turn to talk. You're out of the room. This is deliberation of council. So, I'll open this back up to council. If there's further deliberation, questions on this.
All right, so anyway, now that we're going to get off that, aren't we?
We can, council has finished.
Talk on this first regular meeting, right, guys? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, and again, just to be clear, I understand in terms of, I have to, I'm just thinking beyond that.
See, I don't believe it has to be one or the other. I don't, I really don't think it has to be one or the other. That's my personal thoughts. Now, I guess I have a couple other things here.
Go ahead, Terry.
You know, one of them being, I have been doing so much thinking and riding around so many small towns, and we have got to get off our butts. You know, I see these small towns, and I see what they're doing, and they're capturing, even these townships that ain't got any cities are getting DDA. I think it's time we try to capture some money and do some reinvesting. If you look at these towns, I went down, what's that town down there? Down 43.
Not sure.
How, how?
How about it?
Okay. And I've seen what they've done with it, and it's so simple that we can do it here. But you can't do a darn thing without some money. Now, I don't know why everybody can have a DDA and make a lot of money, and we can't do nothing. I have no idea, understand that, but we've got to do something for this town to get it up and going. And I don't know the answer, but it's dying fast. Now, I've seen what they've done to How, I've seen what they've done to Lanesworth, of course, those are bigger towns, they've got more tax dollars to play with. But they also are capturing more. I see what the township done. I don't know, they got DDA out in the cornfield, and they got it out here on Lansing Road. But I think we've got a city down here, we ought to be able to get some money for it. I would think, if the township can get it where there ain't cities, how in the heck, why can't we get it with the city? So that we can reinvest it, make that storefronts look a little more pleasant. They got, they got alleys looking good. I mean, these alleys look nice, people enjoy walking down them, they got some tables out there. It's kind of nice, but we've got to do something. And I don't know what the answer is, but I sure can throw up a debate. Now, that's, that's all it is. That's it, I'm putting it out there, okay?
What extra money that you're going to get as a DDA?
I have no idea.
That's because there isn't any extra money out there.
Well...
You're just diverting money that's already being captured in one place or another?
That's very...
Diverting the DDA. I don't, I haven't seen where it works, show me where it's working.
We didn't get a DDA.
Well, that's because the organization that came together wanted every single business property put in. Councilman... Council made a decision that we would be prepared to go forward with a DDA that's just the traditional downtown. And our DDA committee walked away from that. That's why we didn't get a DDA.
And we didn't go anywhere else.
Because they took the position, they wanted everything or nothing.
I understand that, and I wouldn't live with that either. But we didn't go anywhere else to get something else going. But anyway, I'm done with that one.
Okay.
Now, the other one I got.
Oh, double barrel.
Yes.
I didn't use on this third barrel.
Yeah, I'm on the third. Third, breaking them off.
He's entitled as many barrels as he wants.
Concerning this, this, this whatever down there. I had something happen that really...
Wait a minute, we need a little clarification.
On the Queen House.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. I had something happen with, with the mayor that really set me on fire. Because when somebody comes to me, and I don't care who it is, I'm everybody's boy in the city. I represent everybody. But they came to me and had a question as to why it was put off. And like usual, I thought, well, a quick phone call, we'll find out. Well, John dropped that one in a hurry and ran. I understand why. I would have too, John. And, and then I talked to Ms. Devon Lightly and then I called the mayor. And he said he was canceling it. It's his prerogative and he didn't have to tell me. Well, I guess you don't. You don't have to tell me, Mr. Mayor. But I'll tell you, if it's going to be a closed government in this city, I want out of it. If it ain't going to be transparent, I'm not going to be a part of it. And that's clear and simple. We've done this, I'll bet you fifty times or seventy times. If somebody asks a question, you give them the reason. Then you say, well, we can't let it out into the public. Well, then I go back and tell that person, hey, we've got to let it ride. There's something going on. And then you go back to them when it's settled. And, and I just think that's the way it's got to be. I mean, that one really set me on fire, as you can see in my conversation. So with those three barrels, as you so gently put it, I'm done.
Well, I'm going to respond. Let me pass around copies. Terry has them already. These are copies of the city charter. I disagree with the characterization of our conversation. I told councilman Wood that I was thinking about some stuff and that I was holding the contract up for at least a week and that I would have a report. I was considering a veto. And I held the contract up to preserve my right to veto it. Because if I allow it to be delivered and the work to begin, veto, that's mooted. You got to pay the contractor. They're already in there doing the work. This is portion of the city charter that deals with veto and sets out my obligations. It states that the mayor shall be the executive head of the city and have no vote in the proceedings of council. So when that was approved, I got no vote, except in the case of breaking a tie. Not relevant to this case. He shall have a veto power and shall be the presiding officer of council. The mayor shall have the power to veto any ordinance or resolution adopted by council by writing thereon the word veto and then signing and dating the same at any time before the beginning of the next regular meeting. Any ordinance or resolution not so marked at that time for the next council meeting, if it's called order, shall stand approved. I have until we gamble the next regular meeting in session to make up my mind on what to do. And then the charter sets out my obligation to council. In the event of a veto of any ordinance or resolution, the mayor shall, during the next regular council meeting, that's today, inform the council of such veto and may at such time state his reasons and grounds for such a veto. I complied precisely with the charter. There's no secrecy going on in here, nothing behind the scenes. Veto is my exclusive prerogative while I am mayor. And I have, until the meeting was gathered session today, to make up my mind. I took the time to listen to what everybody was saying to me, to go and listen to the folks of the Historical Society before I made up my mind. I'm not going to report that I may or may not veto something. And in order to meet my obligation to everybody, council and public, I have until tonight to report it. So that's what I did. That's my response. And I'm prepared to let it go to you. Sorry, I'm sent to Terry.
You're telling me that this is the same that you've always done? That you've never let forth to a council member why it was being delayed or why anything was happening?
I've reported in different ways to council members at different times. And when I've had a clear answer, I've given clear answers. Since I hadn't made up my mind on a veto, I had nothing to report until I worked that out and out of my mind.
All you had to say to me on this phone conversation was, I'm contemplating a veto. I wish you'd keep it quiet. We have done that kind of conversation since you've been on this board and since I've been here. We have done that. But all of a sudden, we aren't going to tell the council members. We're going to have the mayor going out and doing it and he's not going to tell us what's going on. You can do that.
I did.
You'll do it without me.
I told you exactly what was going on, the timeframe on the wire, too.
And so our next scheduled meeting on the eighteenth or whatever that is?
Fifteenth.
The fifteenth?
Yes.
We will have till then to discuss this over?
As I've understood the council's request tonight, we're not putting this on the special meeting next week. So council has the right to override a veto tonight at the meeting on the fifteenth or the first meeting in September. And should council wish to attempt to override the veto, then we do so. After the first meeting in December, the window to override the veto will close. The first meeting in September is on the fifth. So you'll have two more meetings to exercise that power if you wish, for council.
And, and the reason I ask this is if there is water coming in at the Queen House, I think whether we're going to trash it next year or bulldoze it down or whatever, ten years, we got to dry it out. And we'll do the exact finals. You know what I mean? I'm not saying put a whole brand new roof on that. But if we can patch the roof, it needs the roof, it needs it. Do the, the absolute minimum financialized goes. And so there's something to be done, something to be shown that the Historical Society will be able to see that the city is helping out, putting the Queen House back together. And hopefully by then, Billy would be able to find the possibility of finding ramps and things like that. So then that can go into helping with the inside. And it's, it's a Band-Aid and I'm not saying fifteen thousand dollars worth, you know, but it's just a couple hundred dollars in the eaves troughs to get the water running away from it because of holes and it's all going back down into the ground and foundation. And that's going to happen, but...
Well, see, Chris, the thing is, if the council's saying they're retracting the fifteen-five, it's more so just looking at all the numbers, you know, we'll have those numbers on week and then make a decision for the next council meeting.
So I would say that fifteen thousand five hundred is an awful lot to put in, not a living layer. Hope it works out this time. But the long history of nothing working out. And how much is the city prepared to put into this? How many taxpayer dollars and what are we prepared to give up to do it? And we, and I agree with this, we need an opportunity to get a sense of what we're talking about putting in to make this new library. The general fund is not a bottomless well.
Okay, yeah.
If it was, I'd fix the Queen House up and make it beautiful.
Is there a...
I think that makes sense what you're saying though. Even if it's just a being made in a minimal amount of money, to let them see if they can get organized and start getting something else.
That's not going to take a week.
It sounds like they are getting it grouped together that's interesting to them and taking care of it. So that they can have a chance to do this.
Right. You say it's not leaking, Billy says it is leaking.
I didn't say it wasn't leaking. I'm saying it's not leaking in the fashion that it's being described.
Okay, okay.
It is leaking. John will confirm that. There is leaking.
So there'd be the, the fix, you know, X amount of dollars. And, and just so it doesn't continue to deteriorate while we're trying, while we're trying. So, I don't know, if I don't make sense, do you like...
I, I hear what you're saying. I'm just saying fifteen thousand five hundred dollars is an awful lot to invest into something that we've already put tens of thousands of dollars into and that have not been given any interest in.
My grandkids say, well, just write a check.
My wife used to say that. My wife says, you need money, you just go to the bank and you get money and they give you money.
And so, I mean, the absolute best for the city is, is, I, I absolutely agree, is the library. And it's going to serve us more people more often. But I still think that we, we need to do everything that we can for the Queen House. And if we can't do it now, do a little bit to keep it available or keep it alive till next year, the year after, the year after that, just so it doesn't deteriorate. And that's...
At least long enough for them to have a chance to organize.
Right. And that's all. Who liens?
Anything else, Chris?
That's it?
No.
Phil's pardons.
No, I'm done.
Yeah.
Does council have any other items of business to come up with? During no other items of business, we will move to council discussions and observations. Would our school board member like to wade into this more rest that we've been in?
You can.
You want something fun more pleasant if you would. Thank you. Council will gamble. Anything left to say? Thank you. Councilman Ali, anything?
I have to stop, thank you.
Councilman Grant?
Nothing.
Councilman Powell?
Yeah, there was one more thing.
Sure, go ahead.
As far as the rock crushing, concrete crushing down South Fifty, Fifty-two, is there anything new or different that we should know, that we're waiting for returns and...
The temporary restraining order remains in place. And we have engaged the planner. He has delivered his first report on a way that the city can address the concerns that we have for the neighboring areas. We're getting that. I've set a direction for it with a temporary permit process. He will have a report for us next week, I expect, that on Tuesday or Wednesday. The zoning administrator, the city attorney, and the planner and I will go over it. And once everybody is satisfied that we're heading in the right direction, we begin a process of talking with the managers and their attorney. And once we get through that process, I'll be able to give the report. Right now, there's still pieces of it that are up in the air and I don't have a final answer on it. So I don't have a detailed report on it. But we're moving forward with the assistance of the planner.
I've seen a couple back there that were here before, well, that happens. That's why I thought I'd ask.
Well, I'm glad you agreed, Mr. ...
No, I'm glad you could, too.
Anything else?
Nope.
Thank you, Chris. Councilman Wood?
No, I...
I think I have to. With that, we'll move to agenda items for the next meeting. This is the August fifteenth meeting. We have mayor's appointments on there. I believe we last discussion regarding local historical districts and grants on there for no action taken. I don't expect to have, because I expect to deal with it in the special meeting, the possible approval of real estate purchase and the possible approval of allocated funds for that real estate purchase. So I don't have anything else at this time for the agenda. But if members have any item that comes to your attention between now and August fifteenth...
Possible de-override items, right?
You don't have to have that on the agenda at the end of your meeting? If you want it at the special meeting, I have to put it on the agenda?
No, that's good.
It doesn't have to be on there if you want it on there, Terry?
No.
Because you can, we've always had a tradition of council members putting whatever they want on the agenda to be acted on. You can have it in as new business. Okay. If anything comes to your attention between now and August fifteenth or items that require council's attention, which you'd like on the agenda, informed of cut, we'll make sure all appropriate matters of business are there before you. With that, the time is now, eight twenty-six P.M. We are here.